Right, welcome everybody, good afternoon. Thanks very much for coming along to today's committee meeting. My name's Tom Hunt, I'm Leader of the Council and Chair of Strategy and Resources Committee. The meeting is open to the public and welcome to members of the public who are joining us today. There's no items that contain any exempt information. As always, the meeting will be webcast and available for people to watch through the Council's website. We've received no petitions or questions for today's meeting. If I could just ask everyone to switch phones off for the duration of the meeting, that would be helpful. There's no fire test plans, but do follow town hall staff if the fire alarm goes off. As usual, I'll ask the members of the committee to introduce themselves first and then I'll ask the officers present to introduce themselves as well. So, starting on my left please.
councillor Angela Argento, member for Bromley and Chetawale and Chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee.
Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing.
Sir Hevenas, Chair of Finance.
David Barker, Deputy Chair, Joint Chair of Licensing but standing in today as a substitute member.
Good afternoon, Abdul Kiyam, councillor for Firth Park, Joint Chair of Licensing Subcommittee.
Fran Belbin, councillor for Firth Park and Deputy Chair of this committee.
Laura Moynihan, councillor for Manor Castle, Deputy Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure and substitute today.
Shafak Mohammed, Ecclesore councillor, don't have a role, lack of the colleagues across there.
councillor Curtis Crossland, I am the local member for Baiton and Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure.
Martin Smith, I'm the member for Dorant Tuckley and also Chair of the Economic Development Skills and Culture Committee.
Good afternoon, my name's Diane Hurst, I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward and the Chair of the Sheffield Community Councillors Group.
Thank you very much everybody. So, starting on my left over here, if the officers, starting with Meredith, could introduce themselves for the benefit of everyone in the room, that would be helpful, thank you.
Hello, Meredith Teesdale, Strategic Director, Children.
Claire Taylor, Chief Operating Officer.
Kate Josephs, Chief Executive.
Sherry Grant, Assistant Director for Legal.
Amanda Clayton, Democratic Services.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Kate Martin, Exec Director, City Futures.
Craig Fell, Director of Public Health and Integrating Commissioning.
Thank you very much everybody. So, we've had apologies today from councillor Dawn Dale and councillor Ben Miskell and councillors Barker and Moynihan are substituting for them and then councillor Otten has also sent in apologies today. So, item two, as I said, there's no items that contain any exempt information. Item three is, I just need to ask if any members wish to declare an interest in any items of business on the agenda. And in addition, because we are dealing with matters of council tax today, members are asked to declare any inability to vote on any recommendation, resolution or any decision which may affect the making of the council tax calculation. So, are there any matters of interest, any declarations people want to make on that point? Okay, thank you all very much. Item number four is minutes of the last meeting, which was on the 22nd of January. And I will ask the members to approve as a correct record the minutes of that meeting last month. Members happy to do that, thank you very much indeed. Item five, as I mentioned, we've received for today's meeting, no public questions, no statements or petitions. Item six, no member questions were received. Item number seven is the report which we take every month and it's worth just properly giving this consideration, which is the staff of the city council who have retired. And this is an opportunity for us to acknowledge their years of public service to the council and to the city and to wish them a very happy and long retirement. And I hope members will join me in expressing our thanks to them. Okay, thank you all. So, item number eight is our work programme and with that, let me hand over to Amanda.
Thank you Chair, you will see on page 25, there is a referral from council from the motion supporting community ownership and regeneration in Sheffield. So, it's recommended that this be added to the work programme and request that further work be undertaken to understand the proposals in the white paper and the officers consider and recommend the best approach for dealing with the issues highlighted. On page 27, there are three new items added to the work programme. One, which you'll see on today's agenda, minor changes to the flag protocol. The second being the usual year ahead report for meeting number one of the next municipal year and an update to the roadmap to a restored and sustainable town hall as agreed at your last meeting. And also on page 27, two amended listings, the medium term financial strategy which has now moved to the March meeting following the budget approval and the community buildings policy which has now moved to the autumn for reasons as set out in the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. The other quick update is on the outstanding responses to full council motion which is on page 28. There was agreement at a meeting last week with the other party leaders that we would consider the matter raised in the meeting about community infrastructure levy as part of the community's strategy. So, that will be reflected in the work programme for our next meeting. Our members happy with the work programme as set out and with the explanation from Amanda there. Great, thank you all very much. So, item number nine is the Revenue Budget and Capital Programme for 2025-26. And you will just note that there was a supplementary agenda pack which contained details of South Yorkshire Fire and Rescue Authority precepts and the newly approved pay policy. So, we're being joined by Philip and Kerry. Philip and Kerry, perhaps just again, just for clarity for the benefit of people in the room and watching at home, perhaps you could just introduce yourselves and then briefly introduce the report please, thank you.
Thank you Chair, good afternoon everybody. Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services and the council Chief Finance Officer.
Kerry Darlow, Assistant Director of Finance Business Partnering.
Great, thank you. So, today we are presenting the Revenue Budget and Capital Programme for 25-26, which is a crucial document in the council's governance and operations. This report presents you with the proposed revenue budget, the proposed council tax for 25-26, which includes precepts for other bodies and the capital programme for 25-26 and beyond. Every local authority is required legally to set a balanced budget before the financial year begins. The definition of this is a sound plan that shows how income will match expenditure, which takes into account cost savings, local income and the use of council reserves.
The local government finance settlement has granted a much needed 9.4% increase in core spending power, which is a combination of council tax, business rates and government grants. Core spending power also includes compensation for the increase in employers' national insurance in 2025-26. The increase for this council compares to the national average of 6.8%. The increase was largely due to the government acknowledging the differences in a council's ability to raise council tax and a greater emphasis on support for councils with the highest need. This has gone some way in addressing the funding cuts the city council has experienced since 2010, but it is not sufficient to cover both the increasing demand for council services, particularly statutory social care services, and cost increases which have been well above inflation as seen elsewhere in the national economy. Even with this additional funding, the council's real term decrease in funding since 2010 stands at 22%.
So, the settlement included a clear policy directive from the government, just like in previous years, that their assumption is that the council will increase council tax by the maximum allowed and this is including in their calculation of core funding. The maximum increase for council tax without a referendum is a total of 4.99%, which is made up of a 2.99% increase in council tax and a 2% adult social care precept. So, my recommendation to you as the council's Chief Finance Officer is to increase council tax by the maximum allowed at 4.99%. I recognise this is a difficult decision to recommend following the cost of living crisis that has affected many of the city's residents. The increase for most households in the city is equivalent to £1.23 per week, but we recognise that this may cause some residents financial difficulty. Included within these budget proposals is an additional £200,000 to increase the council tax hardship fund to a total of £2.6 million to support the most vulnerable. This is in addition to discount schemes that already exist to limit the financial burden of council tax on the city's residents, including the decision taken earlier this year to exempt care levers from council tax until they turn 22 years of age. So, for 25-26, the council has adopted a new approach to budget setting. Following the approval of the council plan, we've been able to assess budget proposals against the council plan priorities, informing the recommended pressures and savings that are presented within this report. Our ambition is to continue to allocate budgets and align the spending of the council with the council plan priorities that members have agreed. The committee is reminded that in addition to setting a balanced budget, it's prudent to consider the council's overall financial sustainability. This intention has informed our approach to budget setting where we've prioritised supporting services where there have been significant cost pressures, both in the current financial year and previous financial years. The budget report documents these financial pressures in services which, if unresolved, will lead to future overspends. It's worth noting the council has a significant forecast overspend in the current financial year of £34.8 million. While this overspend can be covered by the remaining budget contingency reserve, reliance on reserves is not a sustainable position in the medium term. So, any emerging overspend in 25-26 must be contained to avoid threatening the financial sustainability of the council. It's important therefore that mitigations and action plans are put in place to correct overspends as they rise during the year.
The savings proposed in Appendix Two of the report have been reviewed and have been assessed as deliverable. The council has improved the proportion of budget improvement plans, also known as BIPs, that have been delivered in year as planned and has been careful not to include unrealistic savings that cannot be delivered. Looking towards the medium term, the Future Sheffield Transformation Programme is expected to start delivering savings from 2026-27, which will help the council bridge the gap between its income and expenditure on a more sustainable basis. Part B of this report outlines the capital strategy. This sets out the capital programme for 2025 to 2030 with a longer term view of capital plans to 2055. The impact and range of projects that the council fund through the capital programme can be seen in the documents with the capital programme split by policy committee totaling over £800 million. Individual capital schemes will be brought back to committee for separate approval. Page 239 of the pack shows how we plan to fund the capital programme and the available funding sources, while page 247 documents the governance arrangements for the capital programme. The report also sets out the council's flexible use of capital receipts policy, which will enable the use of capital receipts to support organisational transformation over the period 2025 to 2030. Included within the report are other key appendices that I'd like to draw your attention to. So, our reserve strategy is in Appendix Five, it shows how the council plans to utilise our usable reserves, which total around £290 million. Although it's worth noting that most of these reserves are already earmarked for specific uses. The council's general fund reserve stands at £15.1 million, which is around 3% of the net budget and deemed appropriate. The council's treasury management strategy is included in Appendix Seven. This sets out our compliance with the SIFRA Prudential Code as well as guidance from SIFRA and MHCLG on investments and capital financing. Treasury management ensures the council has the cash required to fund operations and investment of any surplus cash as well as the financing for capital transactions. The strategy sets out the council's prudential indicators, including borrowing limits, our approach to borrowing and current debt portfolio. The strategy sets out the minimum revenue provision policy and councillors are asked to approve this when they meet in March to ensure that the council pays down debt in an appropriate way. The council continues to be underborrowed where the council's resources are used to fund capital spend rather than borrowing. As we receive lower interest on balances than we pay on borrowing, this is a financially advantageous approach. Appendix Eight contains our pay policy statement for 2025-26, which we are required to publish for full council to approve. The pay policy includes remuneration for chief officers, the exit cost policy, the policy on remunerating the lowest paid in the workforce and the approval rate for salary packages in excess of £100,000. Any amendments that may be required during the year will need further approval by full council. Appendix Nine is the Equality Impact Assessment, which includes the consideration of responses to the budget consultation. While the response rate across the city improved compared to previous years, the engagement rate is still low and we will consider how we improve engagement and consultation with residents on budget proposals in future. Appendix Ten is the council's tax strategy. We are not required to publish a tax strategy, but we choose to do so to transparently document our approach to the management of our tax affairs. The council seeks to lead by example in how we handle our tax affairs and takes all reasonable steps to pay the right tax at the right time. The council has a low risk appetite to tax and whilst we will take reasonable steps to minimise our tax liability, we will not use artificial structures or undertake transactions to evade tax, maintaining a commitment to our ethical procurement policy.
So, this committee is asked to recommend the budget for 25-26 to full council for consideration at their meeting in March, including the council tax charge and levies and precepts made by other authorities. A supplementary paper has been published which sets out the precept for the South Yorkshire Fire and Rescue Authority and the impact on the council tax calculation. On page 46 of your report is the Statutory Statement on the Sustainability of the Budget and the Adequacy of Reserves, which is known as the Section 25 Statement. Part of my duty as Section 151 Officer under the Local Government Act is to review the robustness of our assumptions in setting the budget and the use of reserves and report to members when agreeing the annual budget. This section of the report sets out the analysis that supports my opinion on both the robustness of the estimates used to set the budget and the adequacy of our reserves. So, in conclusion, the budget report details how the council will allocate its resources to achieve the ambitious goals outlined in the council plan. The mission of the council plan is together we get things done. This sets the tone for how we've got to a balanced position for 25-26. I'd particularly like to pay thanks to the finance team who have worked over many months to pull together the information before you. In addition, the collaboration between offices across the council and members has demonstrated that we live our values. So, Kerry, our colleague Jane Willby, the Assistant Director of Accounting and Finance, Phil Moorcroft, the Senior Capital and Construction Manager and I will be happy to take any questions that you have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for setting that out, both of you. Let me add my own thanks to you and the team for your work to prepare this detailed budget that is before us. So, have you heard the report? A chance now to ask any questions, make any observations about that. And I see councillor Crossland, if members could indicate, so go councillor Crossland, councillor Nas and then take some more.
Thank you Chair, the report does say that we have received some funding to help contribute to the increase in national insurance. But it does also say that we have been left in a £2.1 million black hole thanks to the decision by the government to increase the tax. But of course, it won't just impact the council staff, it will also have a knock on impact for all our suppliers and increase prices for outside service providers as well. So, with the increase in national insurance by the government, it does feel that the burden of the economy has been placed on every council taxpayer of this city. So, I'd like to know if we are happy to be left with this £2.1 million black hole by the Labour government or if the Labour leader, Labour mayor and all the Labour MPs have done any work to secure further funding to help cover the national insurance rise.
Okay, thank you councillor Crossland, that's a question that I'll pick up and we can pick up rather than address that to officers. councillor Nas please.
Thank you Chair, thank you very much Philip and Kerry for the report today and I'd like to extend my thanks to all of the finance team because I know you've been working incredibly hard over the last few months to get, put everything together. I'd just like to make a comment really, the latest government financial settlement provides much needed support for local government. I welcome the increases in funding for cent provisions, social care and homelessness. These are key pressures this council faces. We still have a challenging year ahead of us and we know that and I welcome the increase towards a hardship fund. And I think we should do everything that we can to support people as we already do. Moving towards a multi-year funding settlement will further support this council. And I think, you know, that would help us plan long term and we'll be in a better position next year. But I'd like to again say thank you for all the hard work that you guys have been doing over the last few months, it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Nas, councillor Johnson please and then councillor Moynihan.
Thanks, I'll make a brief, obviously, thanks to all the officers. Actually, another example of cross-party work and we've got a substantial document in here that balances and it's balancing a number of compromises. councillor Nas and councillor Crossland have referred to some of the pressures that are still there from government and obviously, we're a long way off being comfortable, but I mean, actually, it's a remarkable job the team's done in bringing this together. And I think we have to acknowledge that it was welcome that there's some extra money coming in from government, even though we're still a long way off, you know, a long way off being comfortable with anything that's like sustainable. Because of course, the biggest chunk of the money was, you know, very much a one-off, one-year grant, namely the recovery grant. And so, if you like, that perhaps bumps off some really serious challenges for the next year, 26-27. So, we're going to have to sort of gear up for that. But obviously, the decision today is to take this forward to full council where we'll probably have a debate about all those issues. But thanks for getting this together.
Thank you, councillor Moynihan please.
Yes, thank you, there's intense work gone into this and I'm really pleased to see it here, the report here today. If I can just make one point though and ask for some further clarification. You've acknowledged that the consultation with council taxpayer, the response is not particularly high. I'm particularly concerned about the low response rate from our Black and Minority ethnic residents and I just wondered if you've got plans to address that please, thank you, and what they are.
And councillor Hurst please.
Thank you, yes, I have a question about the, about the actual budget setting process itself, the decision about setting savings and submissions against the priorities. As Sheffield community councillors were not included in and didn't see the BIPs, well, we did see them and thank you to officers for the work that they've done with us to bring us up to speed and allow us to prepare a budget amendment. There are a number of pressures that failed to pass the threshold for inclusion related to the TRC committee and those, given the financial settlement in the budget, have been added back in again. Can you explain how that works with setting against the priority budgeting, which is very much welcome given, you know, we can't go on slicing things forever because very much needed services disappear.
Okay, thank you, I've got, one more member is indicated, so unless there's anyone else, I'll take councillor Belbin now and then come back to Philip and Kerry.
Thank you and again, thanks to officers for their work. In response to councillor Crossland, I think we do need to be clear that we, our financial settlement was £17 million better than we expected this year and that is really significant in addressing some of the challenges that we face. And as councillor Nas has already pointed out, the move to three-year funding settlements will allow us to plan much better alongside the other improvements that we're planning through the Future Sheffield Programme etcetera that will bring us to balanced budget positions in the future. But I really wanted to follow on from councillor Hurst's question there actually, I think it's, it's good to see in the consultation around this that most people who responded to the consultation were backing our council plan. We, the process that we followed this year, which has seen priority budgeting and seen as really budgeting against those headlines in our council plan, I think has been a really clear process. But I'm interested to hear how that might develop in future and how we can carry on improving that process in future, in particular in relation to consultation itself and getting people further involved in the kind of work that we're delivering as a council. And I think the process that we have followed this year, I think we've seen steady improvements actually. And I know you've referred to those business improvement plans and they're getting more realistic than they have done in previous years, which I think is really positive. But again, how do you see as a budget making process that we can continue to make improvements in this way and keep the people of Sheffield involved as well? Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. So, back to yourself if you want to pick up those points please, thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you for your comments, very welcome. So, I think the first question really came from councillor Hurst, which was around the budget setting process. And I think, so, as part of the settlement, we received more funding than we'd expected and planned for in our medium term strategy. And as we worked through the budget setting process, we were clear that we were almost at a balanced budget position at the time when the settlement came in, the provisional settlement in December. As has been referenced already, the recovery grant is the most significant part of that that we haven't factored in. That's a one-year grant, although the indication from government is that that level of grant will continue in future. It's just that the government can't provide certainty on that, given that they've got the spending review happening in spring this year and our funding, which we expect to be a multiple year settlement, will follow the spending review. I think what we had a choice around was how we support services, both where we'd made a decision that their proposals didn't quite meet the bar for the budget round in the first instance. So, it's not that those proposals have come out of the woodwork as a result of the settlement and announcement in December. We had a whole range of budget proposals, both pressures and savings that were put forward in summer and we had to make a decision around which of those were the priority ones to make sure that they went forward. Inevitably, that meant that some were deprioritised. What the additional funding has allowed us to do is consider which ones are most appropriate to put back on the table for consideration, which is what we've done. I think the other thing that the additional funding has allowed us to do is to go and look at the areas of overspend that we've experienced over the past few years and assess how can we put ourselves into the best possible position to minimise the risk of an overspend next year. And so, that's why we've looked at putting money into support for social care placements, for example. We've seen particularly in this year, social care placements, particularly expensive social care placements can push adults and children's services into an overspend quite quickly, just by the nature of the cost. And also, some of those are not within our control. And so, having some money set aside for those allows us to maintain that position of a balanced position as we go through the year. It means that we can help the service manage their position through the year. And an expensive placement doesn't immediately push adults and children's into an overspend position. It gives us a way of mitigating and managing that. I think we've also been clear that we need to invest in Future Sheffield and we need to think about how we look at our role review programme, which, you know, we've spoken about before in this committee and make sure we've got funds set aside so that we're not putting ourselves at financial risk. But equally, we're not setting ourselves up to invest in things that we may choose to do for Future Sheffield that aren't priorities in the future. So, there's a lot of sort of balancing that we've had to do as we've considered what goes into the budget and through negotiations with officers and members, we've looked at how we can do that. I think also, it's probably worth recognising the pace that we need to turn things around at. The system that we work within means that we get the settlement in late December and right before Christmas, we get the settlement. We work right the way through then to turn that round into something that allows us to set a balanced position, including assessing what proposals we might put forward and how we might manage in this year, the additional funding that we've got. So, it's created some opportunities for us, we've had to evaluate quite carefully what opportunities we'd like to put forward. I think it's also worth saying, a lot of the opportunities that are put forward in this budget round are one-off mitigations. So, we recognise that some of the mitigations in place now are one-off for next year only and that as a result of, we expect work to continue to minimise the risk of those in future years. Or we will look at what additional funding we expect to receive from government from 26-27 going forwards. So, budget setting is always a balancing act. We've been able to work this year with additional funding, which is a nice change to what we might have experienced in previous years. But equally, it comes with challenges in how we prioritise where we address those. We've made the decision this year to focus in on how we minimise the risk of an overspend next year, given that Future Sheffield is expected to start delivering from 26-27 and we expect a multi-year settlement from government from 26-27. Both of those things will give us more certainty to plan for our financial sustainability in future. This year is a bit of an interim year. This year is a bit of an interim year before we get towards those more fundamental changes from 26, 27 onwards. Councillor Moynihan, thank you for your question. I think we are considering how we get responses from every section of the community. We recognise that the consultation that we have is limited in its impact. And one of the suggestions that's been made is how we can better use local area committees as a method of communicating with residents and contacting with residents. I think there's also an opportunity for us to work with our staff networks to look at how we can target specific groups of residents and make sure their views are heard when we consider budget proposals. But if members have got other ideas and opportunities for us to explore on how we can better engage with members of the public on our budget, we'd welcome those, any suggestion to welcome on those. And then councillor Belbin, you asked about priority-based budgeting. So this is the first step into priority-based budgeting. I think we expect that that process will evolve in future and allow us to really look at how we can make sure we deliver on the council plan priorities that we've set out. Kerry, I don't know if you want to add any more on how we expect priority-based budgeting to sort of feature in future years processes.
Yeah, so we started developing that for next year already. And, you know, very much recognising that it was a sort of an entry-level framework that we were using this year. And looking at, you know, how we use data better in that framework as well, so that we can really start measuring the impact of the investments that we make in the budget.
Okay, thank you very much indeed for picking up those points. Let me just just quickly, councillor Crossland's point, I think you talked about a black hole. The black hole that is of most relevance here is the £22 billion black hole in the public finances that were left by the previous administration that was the worst financial inheritance of any government since World War II, which meant that difficult decisions had to be taken. Nonetheless, it is extremely welcome that this government has chosen to support local government, and it is extremely helpful to have a government that is at our back, not at our throat, as it has been the case for the last 14 years. And this was a big step in the right direction, as I'm sure members over here would agree. The financial settlement, which provided Sheffield with a growth in our core spending power of 9.4% above the national average of 6.8%, was extremely welcome, and I'm sure all members would join me in agreeing that. So I'm sure we'll continue this conversation at full council in a couple of weeks' time, which is where we will be recommending that this budget goes to. So let me turn to the recommendations, which are on the supplementary budget paper, which came to members yesterday. So the first recommendation to just draw people's attention to is that this committee, Strategy and Resources, is recommended to approve for submission to the meeting of the city council on 5th of March 2025. The recommendations in the revenue budget report, which are set out below, and they go from point A through to O. And then with regards to the capital strategy that we approved for submission to the meeting of the city council on 5th of March 2025, the recommendations which are to approve the content, the capital strategy, to note the specific projects included for the years 25, 26 through to 2930, to note the block allocations included within the programme, and to improve the flexible use of capital receipts strategy. Are members happy to approve those recommendations? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Philip and Kerry. Right, item number 10 on our agenda today is the Director of Public Health's report. And we are joined by the Director of Public Health, Greg Fell, and Cat Arnold. Greg and Cat, thanks for joining us today for the benefit of people at home or watching online. If you could just, for the record, introduce yourself, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. So Greg Fell, Director of Public Health, Integrated Commissioning.
Thank you. I'm Cat Arnold. I'm a Policy and Improvement Officer.
Great, thank you both. Over to you, please.
Thanks, Chair. So I'll be brief. The report is in the pack. This is the second report in fairly short succession. The previous report was a bit delayed. We're now back on track timing-wise. One of my duties is to produce the annual report. Most directors of public health do a themed version of an annual report rather than the dry, dull statistical update, though there are plenty of statistics on health should anyone want them. This report is focused on poverty, which is, any which way you cut it, from biology at individual level, the continual activation of stress response, right the way through to social policy and epidemiology at population level, is one of the more fundamental determinants of health. The report itself is broadly split into three themes. Firstly, the why it matters, and I've broadly talked about that already. That addresses the why this theme, why me, why now? And as I say, whichever way you cut it, poverty is a pretty critical public health issue. It can and should be seen by many other frames and many other routes in as well. Second aspect of the report is broadly what the stats tell us. And I've tried to avoid being overly statistical in the report. It would have been really, really easy to have a dry, dull statistical term. We're trying to focus on telling the story. Sadly, the story isn't as pretty as any of us would want, that poverty stats going not in the right direction. Whether you cut that by absolute poverty or relative poverty, and of note, destitution is rising fastest of all. That section of the report also sets out the impact of poverty on health. Draw attention to the graph on page 422, which is a 30-year look at under-75 mortality, split by income deprivation. There's a lot of small prints that was kept out of the report for ease, but that tells quite a powerful story, a powerful story by itself. Section three of the report is a recent history and a set of views on where next. Of note, I think most members would be in agreement that the city mounted a pretty solid response to the cost-of-living crisis coming out of the pandemic. Obviously, we need to maintain that, but now it's time to flip back to some of the structural determinants of poverty as well and look at the long term. There's a strong nod in there to economic growth. That clearly matters in its own right, but it also matters as a route out of poverty. The recommendations are broadly threefold, creating a different narrative, refusing to accept things as they are. Of note, we tested a draft of the report with the Poverty Truth Commission three or four weeks ago. That one resonated really, really, really strongly with the commission itself. This is a moral case, this is an economic case, there's obviously a social justice case, and there's something around building for all. And the other thing that resonated with the Poverty Truth Commission is how we talk about this matters. We talked about giving people hope. We also talked about stigma, and there's still a stigma associated with poverty. My immediate reflection back was if you look back 30 years, HIV had enormous stigma. It doesn't have now. And we know what to do there, so we can de-stigmatise some of this as well. The second recommendation is refreshing our approach. I've shied away from write-a-big strategy, some of you will be pleased to know. But systematically considering all of the levers that we have available to us. Some of those are going to be resource-dependent, some less so, and obviously not just the council, but all actors within the city. This just isn't a council-owned thing. When we did some, again, some socialisation with the Poverty Truth Commission, there was a strong acknowledgement of the role of the business sector in this. And the business sector representatives were very open to me being pushy, which I will do so in the fullness of time. And the third bit is whilst not having a big strategy, but refreshing our approach across all of the levers that we've got responsibility for, do so through some principles, commonly shared principles, income maximisation, cash first, not white goods, but cash. Sometimes sticking plasters are needed, so simplifying routes to help and support and the like. And they're listed in a report, not necessarily in an exclusive set. Obviously, it isn't something that only I have an interest in and certainly don't have whole responsibility for. So the report itself is a call to action, it's a statement of intent, but it's really important to be clear that I don't know the answer to this wicked problem, nor do I have any preconceived or preset ideas, but it's a call to action for the city. So in close, ask on committees, one, endorse, two, note that there is more to do, and we will do that work. Three, reiterate the council's commitment in the council plan to work with partners in this space. And four, support the launch event through the Health and Wellbeing Board in the end of March. Last thing I will say, these things are always done in the name of the Director of Public Health. Must acknowledge that they're always a team effort. Cat is here, did a huge amount of the hard work on it, but also a whole number of other people, notably the Changing Futures associates, who did a whole bunch of making it real for me. I'll pause there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. That final point is really important. And let me just add my thanks to all the team as well for your work to put the report. So I've got an opportunity to open up for questions, comments, observations from members. And I saw councillor Barker, and then councillor Moynihan, and councillor Argentio. So I'll take those three, and then councillor Hurst. Thank you.
Listen, thank you for the report. I know you have to do it, but you don't have to do it this well. And I fully support everything that's in it. But you've always said from day one that you start with the council, that, you know, public health doesn't sit here on its own doing public health. To achieve anything, that this has got to be integral to everything the council does. And I just wonder, I mean, one, in terms of this committee, you've got, present company excepted, people who are generally in leadership positions and who are responsible for the various policy committees. So I know you don't have the answers, but is there anything that you think they could do? Or what you'd expect of them in terms of driving this through? And then perhaps just tagging on to the end of that, you know, all of us as local councillors working in our communities, with our communities. Is there anything that we could be doing as well to help drive this forward? Thanks.
Let me take, Greg, let me take a round, and then I'll come back to you both. Councillor Moynihan, please.
Mine's a comment, if that's okay, Chair. You say in Sheffield it's going in the wrong direction, but I think I've got some hope that a change of government may change things. You know, the commitment to putting more money in people's pockets, increasing carers' allowance and the living wage. I think all those can help us make a real change to those statistics. And just finally, I really welcome this as a non-medical model of public health, working with communities and those with lived life experience. It's really important to making a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Argentio, please.
Thank you, Greg, and the team for this. We've had many conversations about this in, you know, the Health and Wellbeing Board and how poverty is a driver of inequalities, not just in Sheffield but everywhere. I think, you know, it's really good to see it in print and in an official document, because although it might seem obvious, it's not obvious because we need to have it in front of us to actually do something about it. And I will slightly, I will disagree with councillor Moynihan, because I would like also a scrapping of the two-child benefit cap and, you know, end of the bedroom tax and lots of other things that could help the most poor. I know that officers cannot, you know, necessarily agree or disagree with us on these things. There is a lot more that we can do, I think, and I think we need to still challenge, like, national government on things that could really make a difference to the most disadvantaged people, not just in Sheffield but in the whole country. So thank you for the report.
Great, thank you. So let me come back to Greg and Cat. Let me just perhaps just address councillor Barker's helpful comments head-on, which is, I think it is all of our responsibility to take the recommendations from this report and ensure that in every opportunity we have, whether it is as committee chairs, vice-chairs in this organisation, but also through our partnership, working through South Yorkshire and Mero combined authority, to use our voices to advocate for everything we can possibly do to end poverty together and to heed the recommendations and act upon them. So maybe Greg will say something similar on that point, but I think it is all of our responsibility to ensure that this is not just a kind of bolt-on report to note alongside every other report that we are taking into account, but that it is built into everything that we are doing.
Thanks, Chair. You stole Cat's point, so I'm sure she won't think any ill of you. The councillor Barker, you have always tried to make public health into a council. Sometimes I do better than others on that one, so hold me to that one. Many things. I haven't got a big plan and a long list. I'm sure I could develop one, but some things that spring immediately to mind. We've done an okay job, actually, on the income maximisation that we do. I think we need to work on how we evaluate our model of income maximisation as something specific about what our staff can do around revs and bends and systematically looking through cohorts. But there's also, let's not forget, Sheffield citizens and advice that do do a stellar job and have done for quite a long time. How we can continue to expand that model and make sure it has reach. Probably more we can do in that space. I said a little bit about stigma and narrative. That's really easy. We can control that. We don't need any change in government policy or any resource to talk positively about stigma and, or, you know what I mean, about stigma and narrative. Ditto the poverty's often framed as a sort of an individual, you choose to be poor. Well, no, no, the structural elements of society, and I think how we talk about that does make a difference and gives people hope. I'd be quite pushy about skills in education and what we can do to make sure that we max out in that space. And ditto, not strictly the council's responsibility, but being pushy with employers, who possibly can do more in some of those spaces. So, and I'll come up with a longer list, but those are things that spring immediately to mind. And on councillor Moynihan, I don't do a medical model to public health, never have. And if you ever catch me doing it, then do the necessary. I also do have some hope. We've all noted the Child Poverty Task Force. I don't know when, where and how that will report, but hopefully that will speak, clearly it will speak very strongly to national, Whitehall and government, but hopefully it will also speak to the local as well, because there are many, many things that we could do in that space.
Great, thank you. I've got five members who've indicated, so I've got councillor Hurst, Smith, Nas, Crossland and Belbin. Is there anyone else who wants to come in in this part of our meeting? Fine, in which case we'll take those and then we'll come back to Greg and to Cat. Councillor Hurst, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Cat. This is worth saying and worth repeating, until we see the diminishing of the life chances of people just because they happen to be born in the wrong place, in the wrong part of the city. I really do think, I think you've brought the story to life, because, I mean, when we started to look at the 100 neighbourhoods and doing the statistics, oh gosh, a century perhaps, we still had differences in morbidity and mortality that, you know, people get poorly earlier if they're poorer. People die earlier if they're poorer. And you've brought it to life again in a different way, just by charting the number eight-three bus route, which is a startling illustration. So thank you for that work. It does bear repeating. My question really is how, yes, we all have a responsibility, and there are some things, particularly around education and training and promoting life chances, that we can do as an authority. But how can we work with our partners? Do you have any ideas about getting signed up on how we take that forward? And how do we support in that? And just one final comment, you know, I really used to enjoy the debate that we had and listening to you when we had the scrutiny councils and the opportunities I've heard for you to present this report to full council and the measured conversations that we have afterwards, and I do miss that. But thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, guys, for the report. Couple of observations, comments rather than questions. I thought your words, Greg, when you spoke about the stigma attached with poverty were really profound, so I really welcome those. But I was also struck when I read the report. I remember distinctly the first time I saw the map illustrating the differences in life expectancy across the city. I could tell you which room it was in this building. Obviously, I knew there was huge differences across the city, but the impact on life expectancy came as a real, real shock to me. So anything we can do as a council to improve this gets my absolute 110% full support. So thank you for the report.
Thank you. Councillor Nas, please.
Thank you. Got some comments and some observations. Thank you very much for the report. I absolutely welcome this report and statement. The report calls for collective action across the councils, the local organisation and the Truth Commission to develop a more effective, inclusive, long-term approach to tackling poverty. I also think as committee chair, we all have a responsibility to try to implement some of these recommendations in the work that we do in our policy committees. I spend the majority of my time speaking to residents, charities and frontline workers about the real challenges people face. And it's really difficult for people in our communities and the communities that I live in and the communities that I represent. People will die prematurely due to health inequalities just because of the area that they are born in. And, you know, that has never sat right. And I really do think that we need to think about how we measure success, I think, as a council. To track progress, the council should get a clear measurable target so that we are able to continue to measure this. And also existing national and regional statistics suggest that ethnic minorities are disproportionately impacted by poverty. So addressing these issues requires targeted policies and interventions. We will, as Labour councillors, continue speaking and lobbying our Labour MPs in this city for fairer funding. But what else, you know, can we do as a council to kind of measure the success of the recommendations? Because I do feel like there's lots of work to be done and I'm just trying to understand how we can do that better. Thank you.
Councillor Crossland, please.
Thank you, Chair. Like many people, pardon me, sorry, I think this is a fantastic report because it does all come back to poverty. I think through most of my childhood, I was raised in a household where my parents didn't work due to disability or caring issues. And if it wasn't for the welfare system, I'll be honest, I'm not quite sure how we would have survived. And I've got three siblings, I guess four of us, and we've all gone on to lead, I suppose, successful lives, if you call politics a successful life, I'm not entirely sure. But that was 30 years ago and I think the report does state quite clearly that things have got worse since then. So I sincerely do hope that the government do revisit their two-child limit because things are getting worse for the families who just want the best for their kids. And I imagine that a huge number of those children will be in fuel poverty as well with the price of fuel massively increasing over the last few years. So my first question is, has work been done on which areas of the city might be impacted most by fuel poverty? Because I imagine, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if you're already in poverty, that will hit a lot worse than if you have some money to put solar panels on your roof and things like that. Turning to things in our control, I think tackling poverty at the heart of everything we do is really important. As an example, I phoned the council tax helpline a couple of weeks ago. I spent over an hour on hold waiting to talk to somebody about some advice on council tax. If I worked a nine-to-five job, I probably wouldn't have been able to do that and I could have ended up in debt. And then it's easy to see how things snowball. So as an organisation, we sometimes creak a little bit when people suggest ideas such as changing phone line times to tackle poverty. I don't think anybody's ever suggested that because it is a bit of a jump. I think culture is changing in the organisation for improving how we change things. Do you think we are flexible enough as an organisation and have things improved in that department?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Crossland, councillor Bellbin, please.
Thanks. I would say thank you first of all, Greg, for bringing the report to the Poverty Truth Commission, which was really welcome and it was good to see some influence from those conversations in the subsequent versions of the report. And I just thought it would be useful to say a little bit about the commission actually because it touches on some of the points that people have raised and people might not know much about it. So the Poverty Truth Commission is worked in, it's operated in several cities, been a project in several cities. And this is the first time we've run one in Sheffield. And it brings together civic commissioners who are people with influence within the city, including myself and the chief executive from the council, but also alongside people such as senior police officers, NHS and business people, alongside community commissioners who are people with that real lived experience of poverty. So that we can have meaningful conversations about what we can do as a city that will make a difference to people, that is genuinely informed by that lived experience. And we are partway through that process at the moment. And indeed, some of the issues that people have referred to are coming out as themes within the work. Coming on to councillor Crossland's point there, the systems approach and how the system can really negatively impact people in that situation is coming up really strongly as one of the themes and understanding how people are affected by perhaps being passed around from pillar to post, as they're trying to navigate different parts of the system is really important. And I think that comes back to, again, councillor Barker's question about what we can do as a city to make a difference. We might not be able to completely overhaul the benefit system or whatever, but we can look at how we work not only as a council but alongside other services, our businesses, our statutory services and so on, to improve the experience for people who are living through poverty. And just as an example of some of the work that's happening elsewhere in the city, I think in the North East, we've got the North East Neighbourhoods work, which is being led by the NHS, but where the NHS are trying a really different model that is much more community-led in terms of how they're addressing health needs in the area and learning from projects like that as well, I think demonstrate how we can. And it's very much about partnership working, I feel. It's very rarely is this just in the hands of one committee or the council or one organisation. It's very much about how we work in partnership. So I really welcome the report, welcome the emphasis on how we work in partnership and urging colleagues, as you are thinking about this report, and factoring this into your work on committees, to not just about how it affects your committee, but how we work with other organisations across the city to make improvements as well.
Thank you. And councillor Mohammed, you've indicated as well.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think it's really important, I think, Greg, this issue around stigma and poverty is tackled head-on, you know, and councillor Bellbin's right about lived experiences. And I think it's important that not only do we listen to people about their lived experience, but also share our experiences. So Chair, you know, as you will know, I've lived in city for many years. My late father worked in the steel industry. When I was at primary and secondary school, we struggled. I was the eldest of four brothers. And we had not only free school meals, but also free clothing that this city used to give to a number of us. We used to go to the hotel up there, Leboard Street, Education Department, where we used to get shoes, a sweatshirt, jumper, a Lord Anthony jacket. And I think those lived experiences, no doubt, will shape all of us in terms of what we do. What we can do as a city council is obviously learn from some of the best practice or what we've done. And I think I just want to point out, Chair, the South Lac did this kind of income maximisation project. And, you know, I, during my time before getting involved in politics, used to volunteer with the advice service. And we know there, so many people were entitled to benefits that they are entitled to, that they weren't accessing for whatever reason. And that's one of the key things we have to deal with is to work with people to ensure that whatever funding that they're entitled to from the state and elsewhere, they do receive it and be clear that no one should be ashamed of accessing those benefits because that's your entitlement. And anyone that's, you know, starts to use inappropriate language, and I hope no one in this building will, but we see it so often on certain TV channels and political commentators about how they stigmatise it. I think we should challenge it wherever possible, inside this building but also outside. But I think that lesson around the South Lac is really important, Chair.
Thank you. Really helpful comments and questions there. And let me just make a couple of my own, which is on income maximisation. I think that's absolutely right. And I think the work that has been done over recent months to encourage the take-up of pension credit has spoken exactly to that point. We know that there are people who have been helped to receive support for upwards of £4,000 and £5,000 and then have been able to access other benefits that they perhaps weren't able, weren't aware that they were entitled to. So I think the cost of living team in the council for their work on that. I think the second point I make is around the importance of economic growth there, which is something that Greg mentioned at the very beginning of this. One thing that we can do as a city council, as leaders of this administration, is to be clear-eyed in our focus for growing our city's economy. There is no route to tackling poverty without economic growth. They are two sides of the same coin. And so it was a significant moment when, in December, this city approved the first growth plan that we've had. This is not the city's, the council's growth plan, this is the city's growth plan. And we need to be making sure that that document, like this one, is then embedded in the work of all of our committees so that we are looking to do all we can to grow the city's economy. Because without that, with more jobs growth, without more wage growth, the route out of poverty for many people in our city will be considerably harder. More people having more money in their pocket at the end of the week is a way in which we can make a significant contribution to tackling poverty. So that, the link to growth is hugely important. But let me pass back to Greg and Cat for reflections on the comments and questions that members have made.
I'll have a go. So I'll start and Cat might sweep. So roughly in order, councillor, yeah, this stuff's hard, it's the wicked problem, it's called a wicked problem for a purpose. We did have to check that the number 83 bus still actually runs, and it does. So that would have been an awkward moment. It's not getting better, the gap in life expectancy equally, it's not getting wildly worse. And let's reflect on the past decade in a bit of local level spending power. I can very easily link that to flatlining life expectancy. That it's not getting worse is actually no small miracle and testament to those who've made that. So of course, lots of spheres of life and lots of domains. Partners, yes, this is a city thing and our plan is to hold a Health and Wellbeing Board sponsored event on the 28th of March. I don't actually know where, someone will hopefully tell me where. Thank you. I should know. And any members are welcome to that. At the end, the invites have gone out, it may well be in diaries, but many members are welcome to that. There'll be a bit of intro from me and then the real purpose is to get all of those who choose to spend their time with us that afternoon to commit to what they can do, that in effect will become a more detailed iteration of a plan. Full scrutiny council, I don't miss it, but others may choose to do things in that space. And lastly, on the life expectancy difference, there isn't any single, simple or easy answer. Again, we know that. Draw back to the December S and R committee, the Fair and Healthy Sheffield Plan, that's his point, is the gap in life expectancy and healthy life expectancy. So on the councillor Nas, on the how services operate, Kate and I, and I think all those, councillor Bellbin were there at the launch of the Poverty Truth Commission, there were some really, really powerful stories from those who have lived experience of poverty. They said, simple changes to how services operate make a massive difference. And if you're in those services, oh, I never thought about that. So there are things that we should deeply consider. And obviously, the Poverty Truth Commission, as it develops, will be more specific and crunchier about some of those things. But we can, we can second guess some of that and we shouldn't wait for the Poverty Truth Commission to get on with some stuff immediately. Councillor Crossland, yeah, again, it's hard. What I would say is we're fairly clear that poverty responds to poverty, no, policy responds to poverty. There have been instances in the countries not that distant past, where we've made big gains actually. So the right policy does lead to changes and that's what waxes and wanes, but it's policy-sensitive thing. On fuel poverty particularly, I don't know the answer, housing colleagues will know the answer, but if I had to guess offhand, it would be private rented sector where I'd worry most about, private rented sector and a combo of low income because it's the sort of the ability to insulate a home plus the ability to afford the heating. But colleagues in housing will know some of that stuff in detail. Councillor Mohammed, stigma, yeah, I'll go back to my, you know, 30 years ago, I can remember there was deep stigma to those who were living with HIV. That doesn't exist now. There's still a little bit of it about, to be fair, but it really doesn't exist. We've made enormous progress and we know how we've done that, by taking the right narrative. And we're making a lot of progress around those living with mental illness as well, not quite in the same space, but, and I would apply the same here. And last point, councillor Hunt, income maximisation. I don't know the sum of money offhand in terms of unclaimed benefits for residents of the city of Sheffield, but it's a large number and there's always more we can do. And that's money that should get into some harder pockets. And growth plan, lastly, well, I think we're all agreed there, just off note, I've heard feedback from four very random people from national spaces over the last month or so, they were really struck by the story that the city told about the growth plan. So we should, one, take some pride in that, but two, continue to execute it because it does matter.
Absolutely does. Thank you, Greg. And I think one thing we can all take away is that if there are constituents in our wards or across the city that we are in contact with who raise any concerns with us about their financial situation, please do encourage them to contact the cost of living team here in the council because they are then able to have conversations with residents about any income that they may be entitled to that they are currently not receiving. Cat, was there anything further you wanted to add?
Yes, please. I just wanted to highlight, as others have done, the amazing partnership work that has taken place through the cost of living work and before. Actually, I remember speaking to the chief executive of Shelter in Sheffield, who said that she works for a national organisation and she knows that Sheffield is special. So we actually do a lot together. The added thing that I wanted to ask you all to do is to speak to the people who don't think that poverty is their business and convince them that it is. And please use the DPH report to do that.
Well, that is a very good call to action to end on. Thank you very much, Cat. So let's turn to the recommendations, which are on page 405 in the pack, that this committee is recommended to endorse the annual report appended to this paper and the recommendations for the city, crucially, the city therein. Note that there's always more to do on refreshing our approach to addressing poverty with many stakeholders. This should be done iteratively, there isn't a single, simple answer, as today's conversation has shown. Reiterate the council's commitment in the council plan to work with all partners across the city to tackle poverty, to support the report launch event on March 28, 2025 at the Millennium Galleries, and to agree to receive a report at a future meeting of this committee outlining the council's contribution to a citywide anti-poverty approach. Our members happy to endorse those recommendations. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Cat. And pass on our thanks to the team. Right, item number 11 on our agenda is the adoption of the Gambling Harms Prevention Strategy for Sheffield for 2024 through to 2034. And alongside Greg, we're joined by Anna Twelves and also Charles Ritchie, who joins us today. Charles is from the organisation Gambling With Lives. Thank you very much for joining us. For the benefit of people in the room and also watching at home, perhaps Anna and Charles, you can just introduce yourselves briefly and then we'll introduce the report and can take questions and get into a conversation.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Anna Twelves, I'm a Health Improvement Principal and gambling harms is one of my areas of work.
Thank you. I'm Charles Ritchie. I'm one of the founders and the chair of Gambling With Lives. I will say a bit more about Gambling With Lives later, if that's okay.
Please.
Thanks, Chair. You can't get rid of me yet, sadly for you. I'll talk for a little bit and then I'll hand over to Anna and then Charles. So just by way of intro, there's increasing recognition of the preventable harms from gambling industry products and practices experienced by individuals, families, communities and society as a whole. As a city to date, we haven't had an overarching approach. It's worth noting that many of the really important levers are legitimately the responsibility of government in Whitehall and government hasn't fully set out its intentions in this space yet, so we look forward to that. That said, there's an awful lot that can be done at local level and the proposed strategy sets out that. Worth noting two things. One, it isn't a strategy with a big programme behind it, there are zero resources. We do this through the goodwill and the goodwill of a range of partners, some within, many without the council. The strategy does a policy-led one and basically seeking a mandate from S and R to act. The other point from me is one on framing, lots is, lots have said, lots is said around gambling, around gambling responsibly and individual responsibility. This is an addictive product, addictive product with harm built in that's heavily advertised. Our strategy is framed very much in that space. So if I hand to Anna, who'll talk about the detail and how we developed it.
Thanks, Greg. So I'll just give a very short overview of the strategy and its development and then I'll hand over to Charles. So Sheffield has actually been taking steps to address the harms from gambling for quite some time, but as Greg says, this is our first gambling harms prevention strategy. Obviously, sets out what we're going to do at local level around this issue, which again, as Greg says, really recognising that the most effective policy levers for preventing harm rest at a national level. And this is something that's made very clear in our Director of Public Health's forward to the strategy. In terms of development, the strategy was co-produced by the Sheffield Gambling Harms Stakeholder Group. This comprises a range of members, including from across the council, the NHS, the community and voluntary sector, and importantly, people with lived experience of gambling harms, including gambling-related suicide. I won't go into full detail, but the strategy has five strategic priorities. These are on page 441 of the reports pack for this committee and page 13 of the strategy itself. These have a very strong These have a very strong focus on prevention because, as is also stated in Liz Ritchie's quote in the strategy, we cannot treat our way out of gambling harms. We need to prevent them from occurring in the first place. However, we do recognise that effective treatment is incredibly important. And in fact, the Office for Health Improvement and Disparities recently estimated that there are nearly twenty thousand adults in Sheffield who may benefit from some form of treatment and support for gambling harms. The strategy document includes a comprehensive action plan, which can be found towards the end of the document. But as Greg says, there are limited. But that does mean that collaboration is particularly important. Governance wise, we're going to report into the Health and Wellbeing Board and our stakeholder group continue to play a role in steering the strategy's implementation. So I'm now going to hand over to Charles, who's going to set out why this strategy matters so much.
Thank you. I will take just a little bit longer, if that's okay, really focusing on why this is so important and why it's important that Sheffield takes action. Gambling With Lives was set up in, following the death of my son, Jack, in two thousand and seventeen. Jack was twenty-four. I won't go into all the details. The reason why it was set up in Sheffield was that after a very short period of time after Jack's death, we were contacted or we contacted another family in Sheffield. And it started the question of actually how many people are dying? How many people are being harmed by gambling? Now, Gambling With Lives is sadly now a national charity. And I know we have had a huge influence on, on the legislation, which Greg has referred to, which is started and is underway. And that started in Sheffield and Sheffield is still our base. The other thing to, to, to really say about the Gambling Lives is, is that it was bright, happy, young, otherwise untroubled people who were taking their own lives. And it was because of gambling. Now, we, we, there have been a number of inquests since that and that, that judgement has been confirmed by coroners. There are a number which are, are, are in progress at the moment. And they were all lured into gambling because it was just seen as a bit of fun, a high street activity. Household names, the government surely would not be allowing a lethal product onto our, onto our streets if it was dangerous. And that is the challenge which we're, we're all facing. Now, gambling isn't what it used to be. There may well be people in, in the room who gamble. And it's not what most people think of gambling. Most people don't gamble. Yet if you take away the National Lottery, it's about a quarter of the people who gamble. And actually, it's a minority who gamble on the most dangerous products. Gambling today is really driven by high-speed electronic games, both online and in shops. Some of these products have addiction and at risk rates of fifty percent. So in other words, you're as likely to be harmed by them as you are to be able to get away with it. It is shocking. And those are advertised alongside bingo, alongside horse racing, alongside any, any other safer forms of gambling. But actually, though, so much gambling is now reliant on those. And I know that you will be receiving applications for new gambling premises in the city. Now, many of those will be porting themselves as being bingo outlets. They're not. The reality of those is that they are subsidised by the high-speed online machines in those same venues. I need to say something about the scale of harm. Anna's mentioned the figure for Sheffield. The scale of harm, the Gambling Commission produced a, a new survey focused on gambling, published last year, July twenty-four, which found two and a half percent of adults were suffering problem gambling. That was something like six to eight times higher than the previous estimates and is probably much closer to the mark. Now, the Gambling Commission don't likes to turn that into a number, but it's one point three million people in the UK who are suffering problem gambling. If you then look at the, the wider risks and the number of affected others, the, the figures, as you can imagine, become astronomical. But then also, when you look at particular groups in the population, the risk rates are even higher. Ten percent amongst eight, young men, eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds who gamble. Some of the products with six times the rate of harm. So we have millions of people being harmed in, in the UK. I think the estimates I've seen are twenty percent of the population are affected either by their own gambling or gambling within the family. And then there is, of course, the deaths. We don't know how many people are dying. Still, to this day, we don't know how many people are dying. The, the best estimate is between a hundred and five hundred people a year are taking their own lives because of gambling. It is a public health crisis. And that's, that's, that's why it is so important to have this, the strategy. First, I, I must say that anybody can be harmed. Absolutely, that is the case through, through gambling lives. But it is also important to note that there is targeting by the industry. More deprived communities are targeted. I think the figure is that it's something like ten times the number of betting shops in the most deprived communities compared, sorry, in the most surprised compared to the least deprived, ten times. There's been a growth amongst problem gambling amongst women. That's not because women have changed. It's because the industry is now targeting women with the types of products, the types of advertising, all of the targeting of, of, of the industry. It's really important now that, that now is absolutely the time to, to, for Sheffield to have its strategy. I think it was spring twenty-three, there was the Gambling White Paper, which started the process of reform. Some of those reforms are now coming in. In November this last year, the government introduced a statutory levy on the industry, which means that they have to pay a fixed amount to a levy board and that will be distributed independently to themselves. In December, the National Institute of Clinical Excellence issued their treatment guidelines for gambling. That is a massive, massive step forward. And what it means, at the heart of it is that gambling will start to be treated as smoking and alcohol. So it will be a part of a regular question that the GP will ask. I won't say any more, perhaps at this point, apart from just highlighting the bits of, of, of the local strategy, which are really important. Number one is about reducing exposure of people to, to gambling. Obviously, a, a part of that is, is national, but part of it is about local licensing. Part of it is about action that can be done about advertising. And I know that the, the council has now approved that there's no, going to be no gambling advertising on gambling, on, on, on council premises. It would be great to see Sheffield leading the way to make that even more extensive. And then the other thing I just quickly mentioned is, is the identifying and recognising harm and information for young people. There is a massive education and training task available, both in schools, but also within the NHS and other professionals who work with, 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 with young people. That's there in the NICE guidelines as well. So I, I really welcome the, the, the strategy and very happy to be involved in any debate now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg and Anna. Thank you for your work to develop the strategy alongside the team. Charles, thank you very much for joining us today. And thank you to you, Liz, and the Gambling With Lives team for your tireless campaigning work and advocacy in this area to make sure that there is the change that you've described, that it's beginning to happen. There's clearly more to do, but I'm very clear that it would not be happening with the work that you and the Gambling With Lives team have done over the last few years here in this city, but also clearly with colleagues in Westminster and Whitehall and across the NHS. So thank you on behalf of this council and this committee. So there's an opportunity, colleagues, to ask any questions, pick up any points from the conversation we've had. Councillor Mohammed, councillor Argentio and councillor Smith have already indicated and then councillor, okay, so we take those three and then we'll come through. Councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll echo the, the words of councillor Hunt. To give yourself, Charles, welcome to Sheffield Council and thank you for all what you are doing. A hugely important piece of work. I mean, Anna did talk about, you know, nearly twenty thousand adults in the city. In the report, it does highlight that's around seventeen, eighteen million pounds of money that's been spent on addiction. But the thing that struck out to me was a snapshot, Chair, on page four, four, nine for us, which basically says one in twelve people in Sheffield are going to experience in harm from gambling. So what it means is it's not just individuals gambling, it's the family around them. And I suspect from, you know, our own lived experiences that we all know someone. I absolutely know someone within my friendship circles, family circles that are involved in gambling. And the, the real issue for me is around, I think, Charles, you commented on it, around our young people. Because the nature of gambling has changed. It's no longer just that little book, bookies down the road that, you know, your kind of uncle or wherever you would go down and put a flutter on the horses. Now, young people have access to mobile phones. And unfortunately, a lot of that's gone online. Like you say, we can have a local response here and as you've commented about the banner advertising, et cetera. Clearly, the city centre has changed. Fitzalan Square, it used to be a certain type of offer, quite a lot of gambling there. As myself will know firsthand about, Darnall, it's been a very vibrant shopping centre. A lot of gambling, you know, bookies are there now. So, you know, there is stuff that maybe we should be looking at doing, but clearly, I think there is a kind of health message here. And I would say that as a city council, we really need to prioritise our efforts towards the young people in particular because if we can stop them from being addicts, then at least we can, a bit like smoking, isn't it, Greg? You know, we can deal with the people who are addicts right now, but if we can prevent it as well. I see this as prevention as well as kind of just dealing with the people at the moment. But I think the stark thing is our young people are at a severe risk and we'll work with you in terms of lobbying nationally. Like you say, we can have a Sheffield response, but it needs a national response, particularly in terms of the online gambling. That's a huge issue. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Argentio, please.
Yes, thank you so much for the report and thank you so much, Charles, for your kind of, for being here and for giving, you know, a real life kind of perspective. I think whilst we need to accept that lots of the, the changes need to happen at national level and, you know, we need to put whatever pressure we can as a, as a city, obviously you in your role with the organisation. I mean, one first step would be, you know, to like reverse the, the highly deregulated kind of advertising of gambling that was introduced by Labour in two thousand and five. And, you know, that is kind of exacerbated the, the problem as well with the new technology and how gambling has changed. And as councillor Mohammed said, we all have, you know, if we want, we've got it, our fingertip, literally. I, I think whilst we do everything we can locally as a council, as a city, as a partnership, it's also about talking about it more. Because when we had the launch of the health, you know, the, the gambling services clinic that now we have in Sheffield, the first thing I did when I went home, I spoke to both my children, you know, they, they are in their, you know, early twenties. And I think we have to talk about it more as well because people forget. But actually, the harm from gambling is as bad as it is from tobacco. You know, class A drugs is that kind of addiction. And we need to talk about it more as well. So we need to kind of make it more something that we discuss as we discuss other issues that are, you know, impact not just on the person as addicted, but on their family and friends as a whole and as a city. Because, you know, if we want to be practical as well as how much does it cost us, you know, to put the plaster on whilst we can do the prevention work. So anything that we can do within the national legislation, until that legislation is changed, we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I echo the previous comments about the great presentation you've given us? Like councillor Mohammed, I was particularly struck by the snapshot of gambling harms in appendix one. Very powerful, but it does include something that I really disagree with. There is no way that it's a gambling industry by no common definition of what it is. They don't make anything. They don't provide a service. They're just there to suck money out of people. Can we please stop calling it an industry? I know that might be a small point, but I think that's, that would be helpful. Gambling companies make huge profits by exploiting people, by exploiting weaknesses that we've all got. That's, that's what they do. As councillor Argentio said, the, the regulation at national level, clearly not working. So anything we can do at a local level, it can only help. So, yeah, I, I fully support the report. Thank you. But can we just stop calling it an industry?
Thank you, councillor Smith. I've got two more people who've indicated, so I'm going to take them. Okay, actually, I'll pause there because there's three. I'll come back for any comments you might want to make from those first three and then we've got a second round. Thank you.
Shall I start and then, then sweet sweep if I miss? Councillor Mohammed, the, the eighteen million is a land-based gambling slot machines in, in old money to, to you and me. I don't think I actually know the online, but that hazard is much, much bigger. To roll, go back to previous reports, because it becomes a poverty and a debt issue really, really quickly. Agree with you on, young people, agree with you on licensing. The licensing regime is difficult and, and many committee members know, I've had my day in court, fighting against a particular applicant and I don't know the result of that judgement yet. So we will see, we'll see what, see what happens. There are some things that we could lobby for nationally with regards to the licensing regime in particular. Councillor Argentio, agree with all, in, in short, basically. I have two jobs. One is my day job and second job is I'm President of the Association of Directors of Public Health. And I'm quite vocal on this there. And I know Charles obviously is much more vocal than me. But we know broadly what needs to happen and I don't know the predilection of the new government towards gambling. We're, we're getting bits as we go, but I think there's a lot more that can be done in terms of pushing harder. And councillor Smith, I'd never heard it said like that. It's not an industry. So thank you. I will duly steal that line and use it in lots of places because I agree with it completely. Did I miss anything?
Could I, I, I just, I absolutely agree on that. And, and I think it's one of the myths that the industry presses is that it is a growth industry, that gambling is good for growth. Absolutely, it is not. There are numerous reports which show that actually gambling reform would save costs overall. But it's, it's because it's, it's not an industry. It doesn't have a supply chain. It takes money from poorer communities and gives it to a very small number of very wealthy people. Absolutely. Yeah. Get, get that changed.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Caillum, followed by councillor Johnson and councillor Crossland.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just, just a few comments. Again, just echo some of the comments that colleagues have made about the, you know, the welcoming of the report. And thank you very much for the, the work that's gone on behind the scenes for many, many years now from people like yourself, Charles, and, and, you know, the partners and colleagues. Yeah, I mean, many, many years ago, this, this, this was almost a hidden activity, you know, very much, you know, night time and, and behind the scenes. But obviously, as, as time has gone on, you know, it's, it's been more and more commercialised. And so the, the effects of gambling harm have magnified and multiplied. So thanks to the, you know, the work that you've been doing for highlighting the, the harm. I mean, almost ten percent of the population of Sheffield being affected by gambling harm is, is, is far too much. And I just say, I welcome not just the work obviously that you've done, but the, this, this strategy. And I think, Chair, that, you know, a key and significant, like the council working with partners as a, as a key role. And I think it's really important that this strategy, our welcome strategy, I think it's important that we have this strategy and do all we can to make sure this is effectively implemented. Thanks again for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson, please.
Thanks. Not surprisingly, I really welcome this, really welcome preventative, preventative approach to something that's more and more acknowledged to be a, a source of harm. And I think that's the big change really. And councillor Smith, you put it really nicely and that's been picked up. We, we are actually, I think, moving away substantially from this idea of this all very liberal and libertarian approach to, you know, it's not actually illegal, so it's fine, you know, because that's obviously just nonsense, as it is with many other harmful products. I mean, tobacco isn't illegal, but no one's saying that makes it fine. So actually, very good point there. And I just want to reflect a bit on the fact that I just want to reflect a bit on the fact that we have come a long, long way, um, both locally and nationally. I mean, it's, you know, nationally, we're seeing, you know, the picture changing there. Um, but locally, of course, I mean, we used to actually say in our gambling policy that gambling's an important contribution towards the economy. And I'm really, really pleased to see that's gone now, because, um, like you said, you know, there's a net harm there, there's a net cost to the economy, you know, it makes some people richer. Going, just a bit of an aside, going back further nationally, back in the time William and Mary, uh, national lotteries were actually banned. Um, there was a law against them, around about seventeen hundred, um, because of recognising the harm that was done in just the way that, uh, Charles, you've explained, um, taking money from the poor who were really deprived and giving it to the rich. I think it probably founded the Bank of England. So that's actually where all the gambling money went then. Back to the present, um, my interest, if you like, is in city wars. Um, uh, Shave, Lord Mohammed, where am I now? Um, you mentioned Fitzalan Square, a really, really important thing because as a city wars representative, um, we've had to do a lot of work responding to residents and visitors, anyone going through the city centre who was bombarded continually by basically seedy blokes hanging around outside betting shops, catching for money, continually going in and out. And it's a real magnet for antisocial behaviour. So at the same time, the city council is addressing, um, antisocial behaviour in the city centre more, it's really good to have a focus on, um, some of those magnets there. Some of that draw towards, um, you know, the, the, or everything associated with, with gambling. And it's that visible aspect. Um, you know, there's a lot of stuff online, but right bang in your face in the city centre, um, it's there. So actually, it's really helpful, um, David, councillor Barker and councillor Caillum, with expertise on licensing committee, you know, that when they do get the applications coming up, and of course, there aren't many because of the weird way we have of regulating gambling in this country. Um, but I think it is really good to have this holistic sense that actually now everyone can play their part in it. Um, just final point is councillor Agensio just reminded me of, um, you know, just talking about the sort of extent of the value of this, um, business, if we're not using the word industry anymore. Um, and it's something like, still a million pounds in donations going to, um, you know, politicians. Um, not over here, I don't think any of us get any of this million pounds. I'm not arguing that we should, but possibly just to draw attention to the fact that there is still a lot of money going in there. Because actually, if you're in that gambling business, it pays to pay politicians to keep the regulation off your back. And we do need to be alert to that. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Crossland, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report as well, and for sharing your own experiences. I know the report focuses, quite rightly focuses a lot on, uh, prevention rather than treatment. But I would like to touch on treatment a little bit, because it has improved a lot. Um, a little over a decade ago, one of my friends was going through quite a hard time with gambling, and they were, they were on the edge. Um, and they just couldn't get support at all. And they said if, it's funny, the, the things that your mind does when you're, you're in a hard place, because they were saying that if they did something stupid, they were more likely to get help. So I'm really happy to see that there is now support for people to go through that. Um, and it does give some people a bit of hope as well, that they can recover as well. Uh, the report does talk about, um, the impact, the disproportionate amount of money that comes from, um, marginalised and deprived communities. I just wondered if we had some numbers on that, so we can actually sort of visualise the, the link between, I suppose, kind of linking back to the previous report on poverty as well.
I'll start, and my sweepers may sweep. Um, councillor Caillum, I agree with you, it's, it's a hidden thing. The, the key is bringing it to, bringing it to, I think, this links into councillor Johnson's, um, comments. The, we take the same broad approaches we do to tobacco harm and alcohol harm, both of which, as councillor Johnson said, are perfectly legal products for doing enormous harm to our health, um, and our society and our economy, actually. So, so we take the same broad approach. Um, and the, the more we can bring that harm to light, clearly the, the numbers in there are, um, quite stark. But we don't shy away from those. And it does matter. And as Charles has said, I can talk statistics, Charles can talk real human stories, and both, both matter. And the human story is always cut through more. Um, um, we, the, the, the methods and tactics used by, whether it's an industry or not, uh, are, are the same as those used by the methods, the, the tobacco industry and alcohol industry. So, so broadly, we take the same counter tactics as we, as we develop and implement strategy and strategies broadly, um, with, with that in mind. Um, lastly for me, councillor Crossland, yeah, and treatment has improved enormously. Of note, the Northern Gambling Service, which is an NHS-funded gambling addiction clinic, opened its doors middle of last year, it's fully open for business and, and, and wants business. So there's much that we can do, both in NHS, local authority and volunteer community sector, on training up, skilling up, uh, the front, various versions of the frontline to screen, do brief interventions, spot and refer. But the treatment end of that, which is actually a treatment and a recovery end of that, works quite well. And it, it's open for business, and it definitely wants business. So, uh, we will push that quite heavily as well. But there was, as Charles's wife Liz has said, we can't treat our way out of the problem. So we need to never forget the prevention bit. Did I miss anything?
If I can just add a little bit as well, um, that, that I think that that is one of the big changes with the levy as well, is that there will be much more money for, for treatment and prevention. Uh, uh, and one of the major things is, is that actually the NHS will oversee commissioning of treatment, which, which should provide kind of a levelling up of standards. Um, I, I'm not aware of, of actually the numbers we show, you know, money coming from different, uh, levels of deprivation community. I mean, there, there are figures which show that, that actually the vast majority of profits come from a very small number of people. So the one I always remember is that eighty-six percent of online betting profits come from five percent of people. That is what the industry relies on, you know, it relies on targeting, it's built on addiction, and it's built on targeted addiction. Okay. Thank you all very much for your, uh, questions and comments today. Uh, look, this is a really important strategy for us to consider and hopefully move through to adopt today, for all the reasons that have been set out. Gambling, uh, causes significant harm to people's lives. And like councillor Crossland, I was struck by the links to the first report from the public health team that we considered today about, uh, ending poverty and the link between deprivation and gambling harms is stark. And that figure of the poorest neighbourhoods being ten times more exposed to gambling than the most affluent neighbourhoods is, is one that I think people should take away. So, as Greg said at the outset of this, um, item, this is a, this is a strategy, there is a set of, um, considerations for us to, to take away. We all now need to kind of turn this into action in our committees through our, our own advocacy to add our voices to Greg's, to Charles's, Liz's and others, to make sure that we are making clear, we're doing all we can to tackle gambling harms. So this, uh, has been a really helpful conversation. This is not the end of the conversation by any stretch, this has to be the beginning of a, of a new, uh, and deeper conversation here in this, uh, authority about the actions we can now take to implement the strategy and do everything we can to reduce gambling harms in our city. So this committee is asked to, uh, note the content of the report and of the gambling harm prevention strategy for Sheffield twenty-four through to twenty thirty-four, and to adopt and endorse the gambling harm prevention strategy. Our members happy to, uh, support those recommendations. Well, thank you. Giles, thank you again for joining us today. Thank you. Right. Item number twelve on our agenda today is an international update. Uh, and we are joined by colleagues who will be presenting that, and that is Nick Hamilton and Rob Swarbrick. And this, uh, report begins on page four, nine, five in your pack. Nick and Rob, just for the benefit of everyone in the room, and people watching online, if you could just briefly introduce yourselves and then briefly introduce the report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Nick Hamilton, I'm the council's international lead.
Uh, Rob Swarbrick, I'm a graduate trainee on the graduate development programme, uh, currently with Nick, and it's October.
Slight baptism of fire. Um, you have before you the second international report. Uh, this committee had an update this time last year in terms of all our international activities. And the report, uh, contained appendix A, gives an outline of all of the activities that we've had over the last municipal year, engaging with, um, key partner cities, and also approaches that we've had from other locations around the world. Um, a couple of things I'd just like to flag up. Um, you'll notice that there has been quite a lot of engagement with, um, some of our principal partner cities around the sharing of best practice, um, and developing those relationships, um, over the last twelve months, which, until quite recently, a lot of those relationships were quite dormant. What we've realised is there are a lot of similarities between some of these locations and Sheffield. We're grappling with similar challenges, and hopefully we can learn from each other. So for instance, whether that's around, uh, city centre regeneration, whether it's around tackling homelessness or response to climate change. Um, Kawasaki, for instance, uh, came over, we hosted a delegation from them, uh, looking at how we dealt with looked after children and how we supported young carers. Um, Boreham, we've had all sorts of activity, which I won't go into because it's in the appendix. Um, one thing I would like to flag up, there is a correction which needs to be mentioned, uh, which I found out about at seven o'clock last night. Um, the, on page five, with regard to the, uh, engagement with the children's hospitals from Kamolnitsky, our Ukrainian twin city, there is a children's hospital alliance, which, uh, involves both the Sheffield Children's Hospital and also other hospitals, including Bristol. Uh, there seems to have been a little bit of an error in terms of the Cyrillic translation of some of those surnames to the Roman alphabet. Um, so I can provide the correct details of those names over a minute later. Um, the report then goes on to, um, outline in terms of some of the activities we are planning to undertake this year to develop an international strategy. It's one thing that we haven't had as a council, and we have started to actually implement some of that activity to engage with our key partners. The intention is to develop a strategy over the coming months, which we'd like to then bring back to this committee for hopefully sign off and approval. The idea is that we will try and align those activities with the priorities of our key anchor institutions, universities, the medical institutions, et cetera, because it can't just be the council in itself that is responsible for our international relations. Um, I'm also going to pass over to Rob now, who's going to give you an overview in terms of, um, what's happening, what's planned in terms of the anniversary of our twinning with Boreham, seventy-fifth year. We also have some big anniversaries this year, fifteen years since we twinned with the Chinese city of Chengdu. And it's also forty-five years since we, uh, became sister cities with Pittsburgh. And there is a write-up in the report in terms of the recent visit of the chief executive and leader to Pittsburgh.
Uh, thanks, Nick. Um, yeah, so this year marks the seventy-fifth anniversary of our official twinning with the German city of Boreham. Um, this is a place that we share lots of similarities with in terms of our industrial heritage, our steelmaking, um, our sporting heritage, and, um, sort of our modern economy as well. Um, over the past few months, we've been working in collaboration, uh, with our colleagues in Boreham to plan and facilitate, um, a year-long programme of events, um, to mark this incredible milestone. Um, there are several activities currently on the calendar. Um, there are many others that we're also in the process of developing. Um, events already planned include the official civic visit, um, of the Lord Mayor to Boreham in May, um, and a Boreham residence visit to Sheffield in September. And there's lots, lots of things in between as well. Um, I think it's really important to note, though, that the links between our two cities go much further than just sort of the civic engagements and correspondence between the local authorities. Um, there are deep-rooted community links between Boreham and Sheffield, um, that have existed for decades, um, and that have been established through things such as school exchanges, um, the visit of sports teams to Sheffield from Boreham and vice versa, um, the links between our universities, um, and the friendship between societies and associations. Um, I think therefore, activities between different groups in Sheffield and Boreham that are happening independently of the council will be included in the wider events calendar. Um, I think it's really important that we give recognition to these community links and to promote them. And I think it's a great way of raising awareness of the, the seventy-fifth anniversary itself. Um, we are working in collaboration with other organisations in Sheffield and Boreham, um, to encourage participation, including the two universities, um, the three universities if you include, um, Boreham as well. Um, and I'd just like to end by saying, I think it's really fitting that such a momentous milestone is acknowledged. Um, we are really looking forward to celebrating seven and a half decades of friendship with our great friend and partner, Boreham. Thank you.
Great. Uh, thank you very much indeed, uh, for the presentation today. It's really helpful. And the report sets out a lot of activity that I know Nick and Rob, you have been central to organising over the, uh, last year since we had our last international update. So thank you for your work. Um, if I may, I'd just like to quickly touch upon the recent visit that, uh, myself and chief executive took to Pittsburgh, our sister city. Um, but what was really clear from our visit is that we are two cities with a, a very shared, proud industrial heritage, but squarely looking forward, making plans for a more prosperous future. You know, starting from that shared steel heritage, this year is the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Andrew Carnegie, taking the Bessemer steel production method from Sheffield to Pittsburgh, through to, um, the friendliness of everybody that we met over in the States, the hills and rivers that meant that the city felt very similar to Sheffield, um, through to the way in which we are both transforming our economies to really focus in on the great, uh, innovation coming out of our universities, commercialising research, uh, healthcare and advanced manufacturing, to name just three shared areas of, um, economic activity. It's clear that we had a huge amount to learn from each other. I'd like to place on record my thanks to, uh, deputy mayor Jake Pollack, and all of the officials in the City of Pittsburgh council who took the time to meet with us, uh, and also to Sarah Inomorato, the Allegheny County Executive, for, uh, the time that she and her team spent with us when we were over there. It was extremely valuable to take the time to understand our shared challenges and opportunities on a range of, um, issues, ranging from regenerating our city centres, to tackling homelessness, to managing, um, how we deal with climate change and extreme weather events, to growing our economies. And we're now in the process of setting up, uh, more regular dialogue between the two city administrations, so that we can ensure that this is the start of an ongoing conversation between us. There's lots that we can learn from each other. And so to further sort of deepen that friendship and extend, uh, that hand of friendship, we're looking to invite, uh, a delegation from Pittsburgh over to the city, um, as soon as we are able to. And we would be delighted to host them here. Um, and yeah, I think I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank everybody who took the time to meet with us and helped to facilitate the trip. We had over sixteen engagements in three days, uh, packed a huge amount of in, got a real insight into the life of the city. And, and Nick in particular, thank you for your work to help coordinate that, uh, from over this side of the pond, which was, uh, extremely appreciated. So let me open it up to people who would like to come in. I've seen councillor Mohammed.
My question was going to be around the visit to Pittsburgh. And in particular, I note in your report that you visited, uh, one of the factories, Holtek, uh, which is doing the small modular reactors, um, welcome investment in South Yorkshire. Um, the obvious question is, uh, what's the impact going to be in terms of our relationship with the new president and his tariffs and et cetera? Uh, did that come up, Chair? Maybe it's a question for you. We're a steel city, they're a steel city, we're producing steel, we'd like to sell to them and likewise. Did anything come up about these potential tariffs?
The visit was just before, uh, the tariffs were, uh, announced. And so, look, I think this is clearly a bigger than Sheffield city council, this is for, uh, governments to engage with. But I know that MPs from across our region and ministers who have responsibility for, uh, the interests of the steel industry are in regular dialogue through the Department for Business and Trade with the new administration to ensure that the interests of steel producers in this region and across the UK are represented and that their voices are heard. We have a strong, uh, heavy engineering and steel tradition in this city. It's, it remains hugely important. And I know that we will all want to do everything we can to raise our voice to support the industry at every possible opportunity. So, uh, perhaps, um, we can continue the conversation through ministers with MPs. And hopefully with your new position, uh, in parliament, you'll be able to continue to advocate for the city to ensure that both steel cities can continue to, uh, trade and exchange with each other.
I just want to thank Nick for the work he's done. I think this, this work particularly about reaching out to not just Pittsburgh, but all the other parts of the world that we've got relationships with, or starting relationships in Kestrel and Nablus yesterday. Um, it's really important that, you know, linked to your growth, our growth plan as a region chair, that, you know, I think the face-to-face contact between not just politicians, but, you know, people in the kind of, what can I say, local government, uh, and more importantly, the cultural stuff is the thing that's going to foster those relationships that lead...
that lead to investments like we've seen here. So absolutely, thank you for your work, Nick and your team, and hope you can stay on and learn from what we've done here. And yeah, thank you, Chair. I hope you enjoyed your visit and many more to come, I hope.
I hope so too. And like you, I would also just touch upon the visit to the city from friends from Nablus who are visiting this week. And just yesterday, a number of us had the opportunity to meet with visitors from Nablus, hosted by the Lord Mayor in the parlour here. And it was indeed powerful to hear firsthand directly their testimony of life in Nablus. And I look forward to the deepening of that friendship that is beginning since we signed the friendship agreement back in October 2024. Councillor Johnson, you've indicated.
Thanks. I was going to make something on that last point there. But first of all, yeah, thanks for this. This is actually really interesting because it's a really comprehensive look at how we look from Sheffield out around the world in many different directions there. And it's probably something that people in city don't always think that their local council does. So thanks for that. We've seen a step change in our outlook since, you know, started working on this particular project of international relations, possibly picking up where we were a few years ago. And yeah, really interesting. I mean, it's kind of almost ironic that you go to Pittsburgh and then, you know, almost overnight, your findings are made completely obsolete by a random action of a president. Obviously not completely obsolete, obsolete. And building up those links between steel producers and steel users internationally is really important. And of course, that's also the link with Bokum, which is a big manufacturing and steelmaking place. I guess it does highlight the difficulty that local councils have in delving into international relations, where there is a lot going on in the world that is definitely beyond our control. Final point is just I wanted to actually welcome the visitors from Nablus. And it's a really positive example. So even though it's the city council here who sent into the friendship agreement with the city of Nablus, we had, you know, really powerful testimony from people who, you know, were able to come over and actually tell us what life is like there under occupation from these occupying forces in their town city. A real eye-opener. But the example there is that it is something where this is largely driven by people in the community that has particular interests through really strong personal links between Sheffield and Palestine. And not everything needs to be run and controlled by the city council. So really positive opportunity. But of course, you know, that perhaps wouldn't be happening quite the same way had the work not been put in here from Nick and the team and with support from across the council. So it's a good statement of the council's values. So thanks for all that work.
Okay, thank you. The relationship with Pittsburgh, as Nick said, began 45 years ago and has endured through administrations of both Republican, Democrat, Labour, Conservative here on this side of the pond. And so it is a strong relationship that I know will endure for many more years to come, regardless of the actions of whatever administration is in power. And whether it is around life sciences, robotics, how we manage the challenges of climate change, there is much that we are already talking to each other about and will continue to do so. So whilst we have a shared industrial heritage, the city economies are much, much more diverse and than they were perhaps 45 years ago, when both cities were dealing with the impact of significant losses in the steel industry. Both have diversified, both are now leaning heavily into innovation and research. And we saw real evidence of that in the city. There's much that we can learn from them, much that they can learn from us. And so don't be, don't think that this is all about one particular industry. It's far from it. This is a really deep and strong relationship, and there are many more years of it to continue. And I hope that when we have colleagues from Pittsburgh coming across in the coming months and years ahead, colleagues from all parties will have a chance to hear from them. And they'll be able to see that, you know, that there is strong support here for that relationship to continue.
And if I can just add, in terms of the companies that accompanied the leader and chief executive, we had a couple of tech companies and a healthcare company. So obviously, we're looking at the diversification of both economies already. In terms of feedback, I mean, just to paraphrase from feedback that came back, great connections made, follow-up meetings in the next few weeks to discuss further engagement. That was Reach Studios, who do specialist software for third-party logistics providers. Westfield Health, really productive visit, lots of learning from preventative health perspective, follow-up meetings in the diary. And then a couple of the companies have actually already met up subsequent to their visits and are already developing some relationships that have followed on from that. So we had to take them to Pittsburgh, but, you know, they're actually developing those links now.
Thank you very much indeed. So we are asked to consider the recommendations, which is that this committee is recommended to note the contents of the international update, to consider the development of the Sheffield International Strategy, with work taking place over the period from February to June, to agree to receive a draft of the international strategy at a future meeting of this committee, and to consider the development of proposals that we've heard about to mark the 75th anniversary of the twinning relationship between Sheffield and Bokum during 2025. Are members happy to support those recommendations? Brilliant. Thank you both very much indeed. Right. Item number 13 on our agenda today is minor revisions to the city's council's flag protocol. And joined, joining us to present this report is Claire Taylor. Claire, for the benefit of people at home, perhaps you can just introduce yourself and then briefly introduce the report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. My name's Claire Taylor. I'm Chief Operating Officer and presenting the paper today. I will be fairly concise in my introductory comments. I think the paper's self-explanatory. Just by way of background, following a review and some community feedback, we've made some suggested minor amendments to the flag protocol. They're set out in the committee papers and hopefully the changes are tracked so you can see them. The intention of the proposed amendments isn't one of significant change. I think the only additional key reflection that I'd make in addition to what's set out in the paper is just reiterating the importance of community engagement in our decision-making and acknowledging that there's flexibility within the protocol. And that's been retained. There's no changes to that. I think ultimately, it's the community relationships that are held by members and officers of the council that are more important than the written document. But that's the process by which decisions are taken is set out, I think, clearly in appendix C. I think the only thing I'd add to that is it's the quality of those conversations that make the application of the protocol meaningful. But otherwise, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much indeed. Are there any questions for Claire? Okay. So members are asked to, well, we are asked, this committee is asked to recommend that we approve the amendments in the flag protocol as described in the report and set out in appendix A. Are members happy with that recommendation? Okay, thank you very much. So that concludes our business for today. Thank you all for your contributions. We've covered a huge amount of different topics today. And we will see you next month. Thank you, everybody.